All right, we are going to call to order this special city council meeting.
For us and around those who are without shelter in this heat, these things we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Attention, sweep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call please?
Terry Lamar.
Here.
Troya Shropshire.
Here.
Lori Bradshaw. Kenneth Reshears.
Here.
Kylie Brown. Charles Shammle.
Here.
Chris Gonkey.
Here.
Bruce Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding an update and status of the old Highway 20 Northeast First Street Rehabilitation Project.
Motion.
A motion from Troya and a second from Reshears. The purpose of this meeting is to decide what we want to do with Glover and Associates. This morning, just some informational, we sent a cease and desist letter to Glover and Associates telling them that they were to stop work immediately. I believe they were on site this morning working on their machinery, but they did not get any work started today. So, based on the plan that they sent us last week telling us that they would be done by the 21st, I can't even begin to tell you how many extensions we've allowed them. The project was contractually to be done by April 3rd with liquidated damages of $500 a day. So, I want to read the letter that they sent this morning upon receiving that cease and desist. So, if you guys would bear with me here, I'll share that. This letter was addressed to Mr. Burke, says, and this is from Greg Glover. "I'm writing to express my concern regarding the recent stop work letter received by Glover and Associates in connection with the ongoing project. We respectfully request your reconsideration in light of the circumstances previously communicated and the ongoing efforts being made on site. On April 22nd, we submitted formal correspondence attached to..." Hey, Jase. "...outlining the weather-related delays the project experienced between contract date and March 11th. During the timeframe, conditions were not suitable for asphalt placement under ODOT specifications. Glover and Associates has faced an unprecedented amount of rainfall on this project in addition to acts of vandalism attached which further hampered progress. Despite these setbacks, our team has remained mobilized and committed to the successful completion of the work. Asphalt installation has been scheduled for June 24th through June 27th, and this schedule can be confirmed with the asphalt cowboy. We believe it is in best interest of all parties involved that the project be brought to completion as originally contracted. To that end, we respectfully note that we have requested project diaries and supporting documentation related to time tracking. We have yet to receive a response furthermore. We have not received any reply to our April letter regarding additional days needed due to the delays outside of our control. Please be assured that Glover and Associates remains fully committed, mobilized, and ready to complete the project. We prepare to continue work diligently as weather allows, and we sincerely hope to move forward in a cooperative and productive manner." I want to ask Mr. Burke, if, do you have with you the additional dates that we were given them or they gave that you sent out in the email, do you remember?
I do not have.
Can you just summarize that, that deal that you sent?
What I did is I looked through this, the special conditions, and it basically defines weather days as any day that drops below 32 degrees or over a half inch rain. I went through the basement site here at Pryor, and I have that they have, they are allowed about nine days according to that data. Which pushes the completion date to April 13th, I think it was.
April 3rd would have put him in safety.
April 3rd was, was the original day, and it pushed it out to April the 13th. So, and that's, that's only the conditions as, as far as the special conditions, which is part of their contract, so.
Mr. Mayor, when you read that, correct me if I'm wrong, did they say they want us to honor the original agreement?
I think what they're asking for is that we, they want to complete the project as originally planned.
Okay, well that date's come to pass.
Right. So, here's where I'm at with it. I want to recommend, before we vote on this, I want to have another, I want to add to it that I have actually this morning, when you guys make your vote or your decision, I want you to be aware that talking to the county commissioners over the weekend, which, by the way, huge, huge help from County 1, County 2, and Cherokee Nation on the tornado cleanup. They were tremendous, and in that, I think what we find is they're working cooperatively. We get more things done, hence the Cherokee, you know, stronger together. So, in that moment of strength, reached out to the commissioners, and they have agreed to do the overlay for us. That said, I have an agreement to repair, maintain streets and alleys that was handed to me this morning at the conclusion of the commissioners' meeting by the commissioners. They've asked that we get that back to them as soon as possible so that they could start that and have that hopefully done by July 1st. And so, there'll be some details worked out with that, but the council will obviously need to be okay with me signing that agreement. That said, they're by far past due on this. They have continued to not honor the contract. They have continued to take Pryor for granted and, and think that we can be walked all over, and that's not the case. At this point, I'm going to recommend to the council that we terminate and fire Glover and Associates from the Highway 20 Street Rehabilitation Project and proceed in another direction. We'll have to work out the logistics of what is owed for the work that's been done. It's also going to be my recommendation that we look at the liquidated damage total, which is about 39.5.
Yeah.
And maybe consider that's what they take and we just part ways.
I would make that form of a motion.
But I think what we need to do is check the legality of what they've actually done versus what. But if they would take that offer and just walk away, then we'll do it. We've also seen.
I'll also point out, that's crazy. Is anyone from Glover here?
No.
I received an email from the wire specifically stating someone would be here to answer questions, so it's another.
Is there anybody from Glover? Oh, it's just Glover now, sorry, not him, Associates. No, so, oh, he's here. So, like I said, I want to make that recommendation that we terminate, but also that when pay apps do come in, I was talking to Mr. Burke this mor- or just now about, you know, the rolls of fabric that they put down. I think he said they billed us for 94 and there's 35 on site. So, I don't know if that was an oops, like we fat fingered something, but again, to me, that is just another level of the dishonesty and the lack of integrity that Glover and Associates has, and that's also why I support that they not be allowed to have an accepted bid in the city of Pryor from here forward.
Well, I'll change my motion to reflect the same.
Who had the second?
Don't think I did. I'll change that as well.
Tyler, you can come up here with.
Come on up, hold up, this is us. You're good.
It started at 6, is what it was posted.
That's what I see. I thought it was 5:30.
We have a legal problem now?
5:30.
The email says 6.
So, we were just talking about terminating the contract, they were given a cease and desist today. So, Troya, what did you change it?
To reflect the same, what you're talking about. But you're going to have to go through and figure out the monetary values that we owe them versus what they could possibly owe us.
So, in the pay apps that we've received, we noticed there were some discrepancies with like the cloth that they put down. They billed us for.
Haven't paid anything?
No.
94 rolls.
They billed us for 94 rolls.
What they said they delivered, there's only 35.
And they haven't put any down?
No. It was just materials claim.
Now, they, you had said they had sent a few pay apps, but those were kicked back to them.
Yeah, the latest one I got was Friday.
But we haven't paid anything to them, so the recommendation is to terminate the contract, settle up with what we owe, recommending if they will take the liquidated damage total as their payment, they can just walk away and be done. But we're going to go forward with another option.
Do we owe what we owe? Or what do we owe on, the 35 rolls and?
That's when we've got to look at those pay apps. Those rolls are sitting at the soccer complex. This morning, after the commissioners' agreement, our commissioners' meeting, Alva handed me this and said that they would be willing to do that, they just have to have it done by July 1st. So, and they can do that, they've got the means, but we have to have this agreement with them, so.
Can we vote on a second agreement to that too?
You guys just have to tell me that I can have it, that I can enter that agreement with the county.
It's pretty broad the way you put that on the agenda.
Chase, the question is, can, the way the agenda's posted tonight, are we authorized to be able to sign that agreement with the county tonight since it wasn't on the agenda?
But it's on Highway 20.
So, that is part of the discussion and action regarding an update and status of. So, the action would be that we.
I'll tell you, you might want to wait till 6, online it says 6.
That's the one I saw.
He said 5:30. The posted agenda downstairs, the document says 5:30, but everything else online says 11:00 AG, 20:30 6.
The agenda I have says 5:30 too. It was emailed to me.
The agenda says 5:30, online there is a.
The link, I think the link says 6, but when you click the link and go to the document, the document says 5:30.
Does anybody in the city of 15 and?
Normally I would say no.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the question Councilman Lamar was asking, because we are talking about allowing the commissioners.
I think you're going to introduce an agreement that specifically needs to be listed, unfortunately.
How much did you say the liquidated damages would total out to? Around 40 grand?
Yeah, it's, it's a little less, if I remember right, it was right, right around 30.
I have a question, are we waiting till 6 or not waiting till 6?
I think I wouldn't do it though, especially since I received notice. The agenda that was posted, which is all that required, online, it says 5:30.
Okay.
Benefit of the.
I just don't want to have to do it twice, everything twice.
As soon as they would be here.
And Tyler, you thought it was 6 too, so obviously, there is question of when the meeting ends.
Well, the head, the subject line on the email says 6.
So, this information you have there for the approximately $39,000, is that in the form of a pay app?
No, that's, that's liquidated damages, that's, that's $500 a day over.
Okay, but that's just a calculation you've done on your phone, it's not an official document we have yet.
Their pay up was a little bit more, there was $53,000 on there for materials. And, and as far as the total work, it's right, it's right about 45.
Are you guys recorded?
Yes.
I think we can just proceed with it. The, the legal posting is 5:30, online is not the actual posting.
We were given a few minutes because we had a discrepancy in the online posting of the time versus the legal posting.
Oh, okay.
So, everything was 5:30, everything was 5:30 except on the website, it's at 6, so. We were going to give you enough of the doubt to get here, so. Discussion.
If you want to hear from me, you can ask him.
You guys want to hear from them?
It's not, it's not a public meeting, or sorry, it's not a public meeting.
All right, so, Troya, you want to restate the motion, please?
Okay.
Mark Jay, what do you have?
Go ahead.
I think what I have is that the motion was to terminate Glover, to pay the cumulative total that's defined by you and Mr. Burke, and remove Glover and Associates from being able to have a bid accepted in the city in the future.
I'll change, I mean, I'll adjust mine and support this. Further discussion? Or that issue? This issue, we'll have to do on Tuesday, that just puts us in a time crunch. We can discuss that later, but I don't think we're going to be able to make that decision tonight. If the council would say that, you know, well, never mind, we'll have to talk about that later.
Okay, to clarify what we're doing, you had mentioned the issue of them accepting the, what, $39,000?
Right, we'll present the option to pay the liquidated damages and walk away. We know that there's significant issues with the pay apps that aren't correct, and so, you know, by any means, we want to pay for what's been done, but we'll, we'll throw that offer out there.
Okay. I think communication and dialogue sometimes is very, very good and very important, and they have representatives here for tonight, so I think that it should only be fair that that be brought to their attention and see what their recourse, they may say yes tonight.
Sure, so, basically what we're talking about is, you guys are significantly past the, the April 3rd deadline, and we've calculated up, Mr. Burke has calculated up a rough estimate of the liquidated damages, which is, what did you say one more time, about 30, about 39,000? We'd be willing to make an offer to, you take that and walk away and we're done. If the price of what's justifiably done is greater than that, then so be it, we'll pay what we owe. We don't want to shortchange you for what you've done, but we've got a motion on the table to completely terminate it from this point forward. We've got.
I know you, you scheduled this job to start February 3rd.
Come up here, please. Come up and introduce yourself and let the council know who you are.
I'm Mike Burke, construction manager, Glover and Associates. I know that you would have originally scheduled this job to start February 1st, and according to ODOT specs, which you guys governed the specs in the, in the plans, you cannot start February the 1st because of the weather days. You're laying a two-inch lift, which requires a minimum temperature of 45 degrees to lay a two-inch lift on top of anything. Then you're laying petromat, and the oil spec is actually 70, 65 to 70 degrees in ODOT specs for fabric. So, it's kind of hard to do a job whenever you really don't have that many days and you have all the rain we've encountered. I mean, look at April, it was the highest rain day month it was. Look at June, there was 20 days there, 19 days, hardly we couldn't do nothing. And I feel I've done everything I could as fast as I could to get this thing done. All I like is about three and a half, four days, it'll be done. All we can do is do the one patch and overlay.
So, you're telling me that ODOT specs basically allow us to go almost three months past time? That you signed with that agreement, you were in that meeting with us. We even said we would give grace to the snow days that we had in February. We even said we would give grace.
Well, I'm just, what I'm trying to, who serves, I'm trying to give you a quality product, not something that, yeah, I could have come in here and smeared it on the ground. I'll be honest with you, I could have, but you'd have been mad because you wouldn't have adhered properly to the existing asphalt.
So, I think the, the problem that we're having is, is that we are so far past the point of the contract being done. We've had so many days where nothing was done, we've had pay apps that have inaccurate information on them, and this isn't our first go-around with you. We added a project on the south end of town a few years ago that was, was an absolute debacle.
I had no idea about that.
Well, I'm sure Buddy Glenn, our street supervisor, would love to tell you about it because he's pretty hot about it. But at this point, the decision is going to be up to the council. And, and, you know, we set forth to tell the public that this road that was a horrible road was going to be done. In January, I believe, is when we had that, that pre-con meeting, and we had all the players in there, we had Dale, we had his engineers, we had, we had everybody involved in that, everybody that signed that contract was in that meeting, including yourself. And you signed that, that document.
And I told you, I didn't sign the document.
Did a representative of your company sign that document?
He did.
End of story.
Okay.
So, you know, we had grace when you said that your machinery was.
Right, it was analyzed.
Okay.
As soon as I got it going, I come in here and started doing the, the level up course for him, that he wanted done, the way he done it, wanted it done. As soon as we got it fixed.
Right, are we able to discuss this?
Yeah, I'll give you some talk.
I know it rained a lot, but where it rained, it rained all over Oklahoma.
Yes, sir. And I didn't work on it, I didn't work no words.
The days that you were not here, you were either in Wagner or in Tulsa working, it rained there too, correct?
Let me explain something to you, you had wide cracks in your road, and there's petromat down below you. You get moisture in that petromat, you got to let it dry out before you can actually work on it.
So, everywhere else it never rained, just here. Now, the material you laid down was some of its substandard. Did it not meet our specs and our engineer called you on and had to take it up? Yes. You saw enough of the patching?
The patching? There's one patch that fell, I don't, I haven't personally seen it myself, and I don't know why it fell, because it shouldn't have fell. It wasn't a subferior material, it's something deeper than what we, we was activated to. I cannot tell you exactly what it was until I get down there and see it.
Well, I personally feel we gave you more than enough time, and we played this game, played this game, and now we're stopping tonight.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you that.
Mr. Mayor, I got one question. We got a couple of resident experts for the city. Do they care to respond to what was disclosed, or does that change anything as far as what we're?
She doesn't change my, my recommendation.
Buddy, street superintendent?
No, but this, this is the, the third time that I've dealt with, and the last time before this, they called, what do we got to do to get back in good with City Pryor, and I said, to complete your work. And, I mean, as you can see, and like I said, I've had a call after call, you know, how come this ain't done, how come this ain't done? Well, you know, it's contract job, I understand, but I mean, there at one time, in the middle of this here, we had two weeks of perfect weather. Never showed up.
Not a soul on site.
So, again, you know, it's, I, I know there's other things you got to go, you got other things going on, but when it comes time down here to do, to do the job, and we got a certain time to get it done, but again, this is the third time, and you may not even have to deal with them last time. But first y'all to come, they come back in done, working stuff for us, the road fell apart right after, after a year it fell apart. They done another job for us, they come in and milled our north side of our town off, left it milled and barricaded off for over 10 weeks. And I thought, that's when he thought, well, what we got to do, we'll finish the job. Well, then they come out and lay the asphalt and dig the road for us, and it's about three years old, it's just fell apart. So, I mean, again, we didn't have nobody there checking the material, I mean, that's partly our fault, but. But, you know, I think there's been plenty of time to get it done. And again, this is the first time that you're dealing, you're working with them. You know, I'm sorry, but I mean, it should have done, been done, in my opinion, so.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion from the council?
Is this the first time ever since you've been a project construction manager with them that this has happened?
Yes, sir.
The very first time?
Yeah, the very first time, please.
What about with the company?
The company, I...
Overall?
Glover and Associates?
Yes.
I worked for them back before the other one ever came around, and I never... Yeah, there was a little problems, but they wasn't nothing like this. I mean, it was something that's always worked out in the field.
Were you working with the company when they redid the county fairgrounds?
No, sir, I was not.
Okay, took them over a year.
I heard about that.
Okay, two years. I have gotten recommendations from everybody, almost scolded from county commissioners, county fair boards, people in the community that we've been as patient. In April, we had, was it the Oki Homestead Fest, was it April, April 18th? I got a call from somebody representing your company that on that Thursday, you were going to come out and start work. And I said, "Hey, I got a festival coming, and I'm going to have 4,000 people at the fairgrounds. I can't do it today, but start on Monday and we're good to go." Monday came, nobody showed up. Tuesday came, and you didn't even have the permits to move the milling machine. I don't know how you would have done it on that Thursday. It has been a continual runaround, and the City of Pryor is not going to be runaround anymore. So, at this point, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Schammel?
Yes.
Gonquet?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Good luck in future endeavors, please. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I have a motion from Reshears and a second from Gonquet. We'll call for the vote when you're ready.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Schammel?
Yes.
Gonquet?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Really?